All right, I see us. So we are good to go. Right, John, are we recording and everything too?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I know Mr. Thompson will get on when he gets the internet figured out, but let's go ahead and get started. I'm gonna call the meeting to order Thursday, October 8th, 2020, a regular called meeting of Fountainhead City Council. For the invocation, we have Pastor Jim Spencer. Good to see you again, Pastor.
Yes, sir.
Whenever you're ready.
Okay, well, let me just say hello to everybody, and I guess y'all handling Mac all right?
Trying.
Okay.
Might need more of your help.
I hear ya. Well, thank you all for what you do. I'll pray and then I'll get out and let you guys get to work. So let's bow together, okay? Father, we want to thank you for this day, and I want to stop and I want to pray for our mayor, and I want to pray for the city council. I pray for each city councilman and city councilwoman, and thank you for their willingness to serve. And I pray, God, you'd give them wisdom, you'd give them guidance to do the right things, Lord, to lead the town in the right way. I pray for each of them personally. I pray for their families. Lord, I know that we all have problems and burdens, and Father, you know about each one. So I just want to pray for each family that's represented on the city council. And God, would you be with them? I pray for our police and firemen and first responders and all that, Lord, are in harm's way during this pandemic and all that they do. So I just ask that you'd bless them. And again, I pray for this meeting, Lord, that you'd bless it, that it would please you, God, that they would be able to get things done. So I just, again, pray for each one, bless Fountainhead. God, I pray that you'd continue to be with each one, and we'll give you honor and glory for what you do. So we ask all this in Jesus' precious name and for His sake. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, folks, again, for what you do for serving.
Thank you, Pastor Spencer. I'm sure we'll see you soon.
Okay, have a good one.
You too. The flag is behind Ms. Dairy Berry in council chambers, so if we want to... Ms. Dairy Berry, I guess if you want to lead us in the pledge, since you're there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag
of the United States of America. Thank you. All right, we have public forum. Ms. Woods, did anyone sign up today?
No, sir. No one's signed up today.
Thank you. We have the consent agenda, and again, as normal, we will do voice vote on consent agenda adjournment and going into executive session, but roll call for everything else. So we have the consent agenda with the September minutes and July and August preliminary financial report. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
The move.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstone. All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Just for the recording record, I see Mr. Thompson is with us now, so good to see him, Mr. Thompson. We have city administrators report. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. I hope you're doing well tonight. We will start off, as I have for the last few months, regarding Census 2020. It is wrapping up. As of today, South Carolina had counted 99.2% of its citizens, which definitely sounds good, but unfortunately, that's still one of the lowest in the nation. At this point, Mississippi and Louisiana are the only two states that have a lower percentage of its citizens counted. Found in self-response rate, 67.7%, that's above both the national and the state. Our wayfinding signage project, we added a few updates to the signs pointing to Fountainhead High School. They were updated to include the new Fountainhead Fury logo, and the sign over on 418 pointing towards Emmanuel Sullivan Sports Complex was updated to include our new Parks and Recreation Junior Fury logo. And staff is working with our contractor right now on phase two. For our Woodside Connector and Streetscape projects, I've attached a couple of updates for you in your packet from SCDOT. They put together a couple of project flyers for us to distribute to the public. Right now, on the connector project, the revised right-of-way plans are being reviewed by SCDOT. That proposed let date is February 2022, with it anticipated to start construction in the summer of 2022. And over on the Woodside Streetscape project, right-of-way acquisition and utility coordination is currently underway by SCDOT. That proposed let date is June of 2021, and construction started not long after that. On our other Woodside project, Woodside Village, city staff is going to be releasing an RFP to the development community in the next few weeks. These responses will be reviewed by staff and the private property owner, Surrender Jane, as a public-private partnership, and we will make some recommendations for city council for you all to approve for that development. We hope to have that by the end of calendar year 2020. Staff and several of our council members held a virtual discussion forum with Mount Zion Baptist Church last Friday, and it went well, and we are planning on scheduling another discussion forum virtually with New Life in Christ Missionary Baptist Church, that's Pastor Lomax's church. And these discussions revolve around race and community policing and other things going on in the city. One last project update would be our new city websites that city council approved our last meeting. Myself, our assistant city administrator, our city clerk, and our natural gas director are currently working with Civic Plus, project managers on implementation of the new websites. We're going through a tremendous checklist of items and working on that, and hopefully will be seeing some new websites in the spring of '21. We have a whole host of special events coming up this Saturday, October 10th, at the ON Center, starting at 9:00 a.m., is the annual Pinkalicious 4K Breast Cancer Awareness Walk. The following week, October 15th, at the Farmers Market Pavilion, the city is hosting a job fair in conjunction with SC Works, Chamber of Commerce. This is all going to be private industry, but we are expected to be heavily attended, and we hope to do some, host some future job fairs there in the future. We think that's a great outdoor venue for something like that. Also coming up is the annual Mac Arnold Cornbread and Collar Greens Blues Festival on October 16th and October 17th at Emmanuel Sullivan Sports Complex, which is a change this year, but due to COVID, felt like we could space people out a lot more. And we have received an executive order exemption from the South Carolina Department of Commerce in order to host this event. And then on Halloween, we did receive permission from SCDOT to shut down North Main Street, from Georgia Street to Hellam Street, for trick-or-treaters due to public safety concerns. The city's been doing that for the last several years, and it's been a very good response. And then also, beginning of November, the city is hosting a 10-at-the-top after-hours networking event. That's November 4th at the Farmers Market Pavilion, again, trying to utilize this outdoor space for events as much as we can. And there's going to be a moderated panel discussion by the mayor of Anderson, and it's going to focus on Golden Strip Cities, us, and Simpsonville, Malden, and as well as Gray Court and Lawrence, and just talk about the recent successes all of our communities have had. And then our Mary Market is going to be going on November 7th and November 14th, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Farmers Market in Commerce Park, kind of an extension of our Farmers Market, but it will be catered mostly for folks trying to buy Christmas gifts and starting to get into that Christmas spirit. We have a co-hosted event with the Fountainhead Chamber of Commerce, which will be held on Small Business Saturday, which is November 28th. That's going to be from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. in downtown. It's called Shops and Hops. It's similar to a sip and stroll, but instead of wine, it will be craft beer that participants can partake in the various stores in downtown, and I believe we already have a tremendous response from our retailers and restaurants in downtown on wanting to participate. And then we will kick off our Christmas in our town on December 5th in Commerce Park. It's going to be a big night. We were going to have our tree lighting. It's going to be over in Commerce Park this year. We're also going to have our Rudolph Run, and the fireworks that we didn't get to set off on 4th of July, we're also going to do those that night as well. And then Carriage Rides will run nightly from December 10th through the 20th. That's going to be a little bit less on weeks this year, but it will run every single day, whereas in years past, we took several days off during the week. And then there will be an animal exhibit nightly in Commerce Park, December 10th through the 13th. And then two different nights, we're going to have live bands, Craven Melon on December 18th and the Song Band on December 19th. So a whole host of events coming up in the next several months. We hope you all will attend. Natural Gas Department, the main lobby did reopen on October 1st, but customers can still utilize the drive-through window, the building Dropbox, or make payments online. Today, our human resources director and several in the gas department interviewed or did interviews for two vacancies, and they believe they're going to have those filled here shortly. In the police department, they recently hired two uncertified police officers to fill vacancies. They will have to go to the Criminal Justice Academy. DEA is hosting their annual drug takeback on October 24th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., but we also want to let everyone know that we have our Dropbox in the Fountainhead Police Department lobby for individuals to drop off those prescriptions, and they can do that 24/7. In the Parks and Recreation Department, basketball registration opened up on October 1st, and it does close towards the end of the month, October 29th. Our annual Rudolph Run at Night registration is going to open on November 2nd and will close on December 5th. And the Activities Center upgrades and renovations are now complete. We have upgraded and extended Wi-Fi throughout the building, and we are receiving quotes to replace the front doors. Over in Public Works, it's looking like King Asphalt will begin pre-milling work over on Quail Run Trail and Partridge Point on October 19th. That is through the Greenville Legislative Delegation Transportation Committee's Municipal Match Program. And then want to talk a little bit about recycling. In 2018, our total recycling tonnage was just over 13 tons. We didn't start our recycling program until July of that year. That was the new budget year. In 2019, for the whole calendar year, we had a total tonnage of just over 51 tons of recycling materials collected. And already in 2020, through the end of September, we've collected just over 62 tons of recycling material. So we still have a whole quarter of the year to go and have already surpassed all of 2019. And the reason why that's significant is that we basically are going to need to have to split the recycling route up into two days. It's getting to the point where all of the recycling bins throughout the city, especially since they're not, or since they're spread out, cannot be picked up in one day. So we're looking at splitting that up into every other Monday and every other Tuesday. And we'd like to give it one more recycling pickup to kind of work through how we think the route is going to go, and then we'll make sure that we let all of those residents know what their new recycling day will be. And Human Resources is working on advertising for two CDL positions in Public Works. And lastly, the Chamber of Commerce is having their annual fundraiser this year. Instead of a golf tournament, they're doing a clay shooting tournament on November 19th, and it is going to be held at the Clinton House Plantation.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Are there any questions for Mr. Bell? Phil, you're muted.
I can unmute.
Just one. I've got it. Just one. I didn't hear you mention anything, as the chamber made a decision around the Christmas break.
I have not heard. I think they were going to discuss that at their monthly board meeting that happened this past Tuesday. I was unable to attend, so I have not heard. I know they were discussing it. As soon as we find out, we will let everybody know.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Hearing none, we'll just move on to the unfinished business in the agenda, which technically is a first reading, but we briefly discussed it at the last meeting. So we parked it under unfinished business. It's the Economic Development Incentive Ordinance 2020-005. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance authorizing and establishing an economic development incentive program to encourage private investment in the incentive area of the city of Fountainhead and other matters related there, too. As discussed a month or two ago, the city often receives requests for economic development incentives. Individuals and firms are told by staff that they should put that request in writing for city council. I bring it before you all, and you guys make a decision on a case-by-case basis. This ordinance would establish what economic development incentives the city would potentially provide, what types of businesses the city would potentially incentivize, where that private investment must be located, and other benchmark criteria that would make a project eligible. Under this ordinance, the established incentives are up to 100% of city sewer tap fees, up to 50% of city building permit fees, up to 50% of city business license fees for up to five years, up to 50% of city hospitality taxes for up to five years, and any other incentives council deems appropriate. And any combination of those incentives may be used. The intended use of the development must be for one or more of the following business purposes: retail uses, tourism-related businesses or activities, cultural arts activities, corporate headquarters, research and development, high-technology growth businesses, and any other uses as determined by city council. The established incentive area, and you have a map in your packet, includes all the properties located within our C1 zoning district, which is our central business district, all properties zoned neighborhood commercial, which there aren't a whole lot in the city, the gateway corridor overlay district, which is a portion of SC 418, and all properties with frontage along the corridor of North and South Main Street, Harrison Bridge Road, 418, Fairview Street, or I-385, that are currently zoned C2, which is our commercial zoning district, or if it's in a planned development, if it was slated for commercial use, or if it was slated for C2 in the future land use map. The development must have a minimum threshold investment of $1 million, which can be comprised of any combination of real property acquisition costs, the cost of physical improvements to real property, or the cost of capital improvements to city infrastructure. And a development may be given a credit towards that minimum investment threshold of $50,000 for each full-time equivalent job created by the development.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Before discussion, is there a motion to approve on first reading 2020-005 Economic Development Incentive Ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstone. Any discussion? Mr. Bell, I had a point. Is there a way, I know you and I have discussed this, of either in this ordinance or in whether it's, I'm not sure of the right placement. So before second reading, I'd like to see kind of where this would best lie, because it may not be here, it may be with a budget, or maybe something different, but something for existing businesses who wish to expand or do something, some sort of, whether it's a grant program or what have you, that might be useful. But a lot, I mean, this is a, I like this ordinance. It's for hefty investment, and that's appropriate, but I'd like to see if, you know, us be able to build something that gives us guidance at city council on what we can do for existing businesses. As you said, we don't have anything like this in place, so we don't really have, we're essentially creating guidelines as we go. So I'd like to have something a little bit more formal in place.
Sure. So this ordinance, right, as presented, is kind of a, I wouldn't say a model ordinance, but it is one that other municipalities have passed throughout the state. One of the things, as far as an existing business incentive program, would be something that I would like to see what some other cities are doing in that realm. I'm aware of a lot of communities having a facade improvement program. The city of Fountainhead used to have one. I don't believe that the program was ever formally adopted via resolution or ordinance by council, but I found the old application, and at that time, it was a maximum of $2,500 reimbursable expenses to improve the, or to renovate or rehab facades of commercial or mixed-use buildings in our central business district. And I think that's a good starting place. I think I would want to expand that to maybe more than just facade improvements, but I think having a set document that council adopted would be appropriate. That is something that could be inserted into this ordinance 2020-005 in between first and second reading, or this is something that could be adopted as a standalone resolution or ordinance in the future. Or if passed after second reading, this could be something that was almost like amending this one to just add some language into this ordinance that would create an existing business incentive program.
Thanks. I think I'd like to see it somehow attached to this, but I understand if it's not ready, or something we got to do somewhere digging on, you know, we can always amend or add it to it. But I think before secondary, for my sake, I'd like to kind of get staff's opinion on what the best strategy is for that, and then proceed.
And there were, in fact, Mr. Bell, several downtown businesses that took advantage of the program that was launched back then.
Yeah, I think we owe a lot of the current Main Street look to some of those.
Yep, and this would be in addition to the facade grant program that GCRRA already has. So I believe that that is a $5,000 or a $10,000 grant from GCRRA that can actually be turned into a forgivable loan. And this would just be a way to supplement that.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Bell? All right, hearing none. We have a motion and a second. So now, Ms. Woods, if you'll do a roll call for approval of 2020-005 Economic Development Incentive Ordinance.
Councilmember Mahoney?
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson?
Aye.
Councilmember Dairy Berry?
Aye.
Councilmember Clemmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Blackstone?
Aye.
And Mayor McClure?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Move on to the next item, new business zoning ordinance 2020-002, rezoned to FRD, tax mic number 05620100302. Mr. Bell and Mr. Gordos?
All right, this is an ordinance for first reading to amend our official zoning map. This ordinance would rezone 10.39 acres from service district to flexible review district. The Planning Commission voted in favor of this rezoning on a 3-2 vote at our September 14th Planning Commission meeting. The hearing was conducted via Zoom. Paul Harrison with Blue Water Civil Design spoke on behalf of the applicant, presenting a 54-unit subdivision on approximately 12 acres. The parcel has some power line easements that are unusable, which is why there's a little bit of a discrepancy there between the 12 acres and the 10.39 acres. One housing product would be a single-family detached with front-loaded garage, while other homes would have rear-loaded garages with vehicle access via an alley. There were approximately 14 citizens, primarily neighboring property owners in unincorporated Greenville County, that provided written public comment in opposition. Those objections included home density, road conditions, and adjacency to industrial use. This piece of property has been annexed into the city limits since, it's been in the city since like 2007, 2008. One of the questions that did come up at the Planning Commission meeting was that proximity to the Saudi plant and potential noise. I had our Fountainhead Police Department do some noise level checks during the day and at night for several days, just to kind of see, you know, if that was a potential issue. They did not detect any noise level violations. The rezoning is a flexible review district, meaning that you all get to have a little bit more information than a traditional annexation or rezoning case. You will see in your packet that there is a statement of intent, and you get to see pictures of what the housing product would potentially look like. You get to see a site layout. You will see that there are added... There's some buffers that are blocking the houses from the road, and also, that's also intended to help block any potential noise as well. Fiber cement is going to be the minimum on the exterior of the homes. And, you know, I was mentioning earlier, that was screening is going to be provided between the overhead power easement and the lots, as well as the eastern side of the Pocket Park. And the subdivisions, proposed name is Fairview cottages. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions. And we do have our planning and zoning administrator on the call as well.
Before we hit the discussion, is there a motion to approve on first reading Z 2020-002?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson, I believe. Thank you. All right, any questions or comments for Mr. Bell or Greg?
So, yes.
Yes, Mr. Clemmer.
Where are we with the connection to the sewer situation? Is that all resolved, or where are we with that?
It is not. I would, I would, we can talk to Mr. Holmes, can weigh in on that, but I would have council consider this on its merits of a rezoning, regardless of any sewer utility issues.
I think, to Mr. Bell's point, Mr. Clemmer, I totally understand where the question, why would we ask the question? I think the sewer would need to be accessed regardless of the use as well. Is that kind of the way I've been thinking about it. But, Mr. Holmes, if you have anything to add?
No, sir. The issue hasn't been resolved, and there's a lot more work that has to be done.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bell, does this, has, I remember from the Planning Commission meeting, has an HOA. I know there were some concerns over the width of the road and the ability for our Public Works vehicles in particular to get in and out of that dead-end alley. public works vehicles in particular to get in and out of that dead-end alley, or both of those, all those dead-end alleys, the two of them?
There is, in fact, an HOA. The for what I remember from the the Planning Commission meeting was that trash can or homes that were that had that rear-loaded garage would need to place their city-provided trashcans on the other side on the on the main roads. So we so our trash truck does not have to go down that alley.
Any other questions for Mr. Bell? And this is F R D. Not only do we see this, we see it next month, and we also then goes to Planning Commission for further review as well before any dirt moves, correct, Mr. Bell?
Yes, there's several more steps. As you mentioned, this would be first reading by council. There would need to be a second reading by by City Council. There would also need to be a subdivision advisory committee or public hearing that the Planning Commission would approve. And then later, when they are when the applicant is submitting their 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 final plans for the flexible review district, Planning Commission would would need to review and approve that as well.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing and seeing none. This is for first reading of Z 2020-002. There's a motion to approve. Ms. Woods, if you want to do roll call?
Councilmember Mahoney?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomason?
Aye.
Councilmember Dairy Berry?
Aye.
Councilmember Clemmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Blackstone?
Aye.
And Mayor McClear?
Aye.
Motion is approved on first reading 7-0. I'll move on to the next item, B, Resolution 2020-009, Manuel Sullivan Sports Complex, alcoholic beverages during the Mac Arnold Festival. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. There's a resolution allowing the sale and possession of alcoholic beverages in the Manuel Sullivan Sports Complex during the Mac Arnold Cornbread and Collard Greens Blues Festival on October 16th and 17th, 2020. This festival is typically held in Commerce Park, but in order to comply with the mandates that have been set by the governor, the CDC, and D H E C, and all of that, and in order for the community to still have this this festival, we've decided to move the site of the event over to our our new park, Manuel Sullivan Sports Complex, so that a number of attendees can be expanded, but we can also control the access, and proper social distancing can occur as well. The event typically includes sale and possession of alcoholic beverages, and that is normally prohibited in our public parks via our code of ordinances, but this resolution would allow the possession and sale of alcohol to occur just at this one event.
No.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bell. Before discussion, is there a motion to approve our 2020-009?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Thomason. Is there a second?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dairy Berry. Any discussion or comments?
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham?
Um, I have no problem with the event being moved, but I do have a problem that the sale of alcohol, because to me, that that part represents our community and our youth in our community. And if you want to allow alcohol and sale at that event, and we have other events, and some of us want alcohol beverages sold, and they say, well, no, we can't do that, well, you did it for one, you would have to do it for all. So I'm totally against it. So that's just my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Bell, this this is only for this event, does not permit it pass this event, correct?
Correct.
It doesn't matter. Alcohol is alcohol. That's what I look at. I mean, it is Emmanuel Sports Club is supposed to be a family-friendly park, and when you start bringing in stuff that doesn't represent family-friendly, it can be something else. So I'm against it. So what if y'all, I'm fine with it, but I'm just I'm not with it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmer. I I agree that alcohol should not be permitted there on any other occasion. I think with just the ability to help help our our community enjoy the enjoy the festival, given the COVID restrictions, I think that's how why I'm I'm okay with supporting it. But I do agree that that is not the intent of the park, and that should intent should remain after this event ends. I agree. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Ms. Woods, is there a roll call, please, for approval?
AJ had a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Dairy Berry.
It was just a, I guess it's just a thought. I I kind of lean with Mr. Cunningham on that it's a youth park. I understand the event is not necessarily a youth event. I I just, I think that, you know, I don't want it to open up a flag. I don't think you open a flag because it's a special one-time thing, but how do we keep other events from saying, well, you did it for Mac Arnold? Why can't you do it for whatever the next event might be there?
Right.
It's a good it's a good question, Ms. Ms. Mysteri Berry. I think that two things. One, this doesn't change the ordinance. So after this, the ordinance that prohibits it remains in place, as well as this this event and this resolution take place during the state of emergency, which will expire at some point that we currently have. So there's, I think, in in order for this to happen for something else outside of this, I think it would take a change in the ordinance, which I don't think most of us would have would be in this. I wouldn't be in favor, but I can't speak for everyone, I guess.
But but the but the councils have to vote on it, correct? If 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 someone else come in with an event and says, well, we have to bring it back to council for them to vote on it, correct?
Actually, I would, and Ms. Holmes, I maybe, or Sean, I maybe a little make sure I'm saying this right. That's not an option for private rentals. This is a city-only, a city-sponsored, and a city-managed event. So even if a private entity were to say we would like to do that, I mean, I mean, yes, council could vote on it, but staff level, their first response would be, no, it is not permitted for per our ordinance.
Well, we we normally have these events at Commerce Park, correct?
Yes, sir.
And Commerce Park is a family-friendly area also, correct?
There are there are family-friendly events hosted there, yes, sir.
So I mean, I don't think we would ever host other events like this at the park unless it was in these times, correct?
That that's would be my that's my preference.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments or questions?
All to vote.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmer. Ms. Ms. Woods?
Councilmember Mahoney?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomason?
Aye.
Councilmember Dairy Berry?
Aye.
Councilmember Clemmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham?
No.
Councilmember Blackstone?
Aye.
Mayor McClear?
Aye. Motion passes 5-2. We now have executive session. There are a couple items, and I have to read them off for everybody. I'm going to get to the top of my packet real quick, make sure I get it right. All right, we have executive session for the discussion of proposed contract concerning the provision of natural gas services and the receipt of legal advice in relation thereto for the receipt of legal advice concerning a potential development agreement concerning the provision of sewer service, a discussion of matters related to proposed location expansion of provision of services encouraging location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area of service by the city concerning Project Smoke, for the receipt of legal advice concerning a pending claim against the city and other matters governed by attorney-client privilege related thereto, and the discussion of the city's position regarding that claim, and the discussion of employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, or release of employees in the Public Works Department. Upon returning to open session, council may act on items discussed during executive session. Is there a motion to go into executive session for those stated reasons?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I heard Mr. Blackstone first. All those in favor of entering executive session for the reasons stated in the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. We will now enter into executive session.
All right, give me a minute, ma'am.
Thank you.